Welcome to the Wednesday, February 10th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. It is 7:01. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this meeting of the Dudley Planning Board will be conducted in total via remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at DudleyMA.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: via Facebook Live and our posted link at DudleyMA.gov following the meeting. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. All right, we'll do a quick call to order by role since we're so remote. Guy Horn?
Hi.
Morning. Bill Page? Are you muted?
Yep.
Bill, you're muted. All right. Steve Vitrova?
Here.
Richard Clark?
Here.
Myself, Daniel Edmiston, here. Bill Scanlon, our town planner.
Here.
And Michelle, our town clerk. All right. New business, first item, approval of minutes, January 13th, 2021. I missed last, our last meeting, first time in four years, so I'm hoping that the rest of the team has had a chance to read the minutes. Do I have a, any motions to entertain?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was wondering if we could amend the meeting minutes. I'm looking at the minutes right now and under item two, the last paragraph, there's a quote or there's a reference to me and it mentions Route 131. And the discussion was actually about Route 197. It's not much of a, it's not much of a difference, Michelle, but if you could just change
What length?
That to 197.
Sure.
Because I remember we were discussing that that's West Main Street and I think I was particularly not thrilled with the idea that we couldn't do anything as far as all those crosswalks that they were talking about and things like that.
Right. I'll just remove that 131.
All right, yes, Richard, you're muted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question regards to, it looks like it's item number three. If we continue scrolling down at the end of item three or near the end of it, Planning Board will have to make a recommendation to town meeting on the zoning amendment, but the Darty still have to come up with the specific language. I don't know, I'm trying to recall what was said in the meeting, but I don't recall there was any thought that we had to make. "Have to make" seems a little stronger than I recall the discussion of that evening.
Well, as I recall, you know, she came, she and her husband came to the meeting to talk about what they proposed to do in some kind of zoning change. And I thought the Planning Board, you know, basically agreed to let them go forward or, you know, didn't really take a position on the, on the matter at that time, but just said, you know, fine, you can go ahead.
I agree fully, Bill. I think that's exactly what happened. But I, the way I read that seems to imply that the Planning Board has a task ahead of it. And that being to address the town meeting regarding a zoning amendment.
Well, that's true with any zoning amendment. It has to go for a public hearing before the Planning Board. You have to take a position and then make a report to town meeting on any zoning amendment. So that's just the normal course of events.
All right. If that's your recollection, then I'll yield.
Any other omissions or corrections anybody wants to ask about?
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've ruled that we accept the minutes for the meeting of, and I'm forgetting the date. I'm referring now, January 13th, 2021, as amended.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have two seconds. All those in favor by roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Guy?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Richard?
Hi.
I have to abstain since I wasn't there and I did not have a chance to go back and watch the movie, so passes unanimously. Item two, A and R plans, none with it. Okay. Item three, discussion of the Complete Streets program with Ms. Gemma Wilkins of the CMRPC. I see Gemma, you're on, hello?
Yes, hi.
I will make you a host, Gemma, so you can share your PowerPoint if you like.
Awesome, thank you so much. And can you hear, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
So I will wait a moment and then I'll share my screen with you.
Okay, Gemma.
Awesome, thank you so much. Can everybody see that okay?
Yep, thumbs up.
Yes.
Awesome. Um, so congratulations, you're on your second meeting of talking about the Complete Streets project prioritization plan. Um, this meeting, so the first meeting was about kind of going over what the program, what projects are eligible for the program. This meeting is going to be really about you guys and kind of hearing what your priorities are, trying to identify things that you might want to put on the plan. And then the next meeting will be much more detailed of sort of making recommendations of some of those building blocks. We talked about some solution kind of oriented discussion. Um, so, you know, it's kind of a broader discussion, trying to just get ideas of what the focus of the town of Dudley is in terms of what, what kinds of needs you have. I'm here with my colleague Faye and she was very involved in the data collection part of this and she also put together the mapping tool that we're, we're going to show you. So before this meeting, I sent out three links. And so if you got a chance to look at those, that would be helpful, but if not, it's fine. We'll talk about all of this and then you can always go back. Um, you know, look at these two things and explore them a little bit more. Follow up next, next time we meet or feel free to email me if you have any comments or ideas. And I can, you know, put that, put that on the list of things to, to keep in mind. Um, so there's two tools. The first one is the data collection viewer. Um, you can follow this link at the end of this, you'll get this PowerPoint. Um, or it's also posted in the meeting material section on the Dudley website. Uh, and this is basically kind of operates like Google Maps. You can pan around, you can zoom in and you can just see the data that we collected. Um, you can click on the elements and see a photograph and some information about that element. Um, and then the other one was just basically a Google Doc that has some questions to kind of get you thinking. So during this presentation, I'm really just gonna, you know, what we would usually do in a non-COVID-19 world is we'd bring like five or three big maps that show our data. We'd put them on the table and kind of start to talk to the community about what they see their, their needs as being. So I'm trying my best to recreate that for all of you today. Uh, so I put some maps, I'm going to put some maps up and then I'm going to just kind of ask you some prompting questions. Um, and hopefully, you know, you today is all about just saying what you have to say, what ideas you have. Um, this is just a quick slide showing you how the tool works. So when you, um, get this PowerPoint, you'll have that as just a reference. Just to kind of quick reminder overview of the Complete Streets program. Um, you know, the way you're going to create a plan that has a bunch of projects listed, but the projects, when you eventually go to apply for funding that are really the most competitive are those that are in keeping with kind of the spirit of Complete Streets. So it's thinking about, you know, showing that there's consideration of all users, pedestrians, thinking about students and seniors, safe routes to school and safe routes for seniors are really the most competitive types of projects. So with each of your projects, I can, you know, in the next meeting, make recommendations as to how you can incorporate some of those elements that make sure that each of those projects is, you know, really solid and fundable. Just some Dudley specific things to keep in mind in the conversation. Uh, the first unfortunate kind of, you know, where we have to get a little creative with this is the fact that 197 and 131, those two main routes in town are not eligible for Complete Streets because they're eligible for federal funding. Uh, so, you know, this, this map here is the sidewalk net, what the sidewalk network in Dudley looks like. And so you can see when you take out those, those streets, a lot of the sidewalk network is, you know, already cut out. You've really got kind of these little disparate pieces. So this discussion, you know, therefore, if you, you know, what you can get out of this is sort of thinking in the positive, thinking what can we add? How can we build out our sidewalk network or our bike infrastructure? How can we better connect things? Um, how can we improve things around key commercial areas that we're interested in connecting? You know, um, to kind of, you know, utilize these funds to our best abilities. And then the last thing to think about is the way that the Complete Street Plan works, it, you know, I showed it in the last meeting. It's an Excel, it's an Excel spreadsheet that has a list of projects and then you prioritize them. There is no limit on the projects that you can put on that list, but if you don't put a project on that list, if within the five-year period that that plan covers, you ever want to apply for it, you, you can apply for it. So we at least want to have the most possible coverage. So really think of, you know, if there's anything you have in your mind that you think would be useful, put it on the list, right? It might not be your top priority, but it's better to have it on there than to not. Um, and then just participation wise, Faye is going to be taking notes throughout this of all of the types of, you know, what are your key focuses? What are the things that come up over and over? Um, and then at the end, we'll share that with you guys and kind of make sure we captured all the information you've pulled us. Um, and then think about, you know, of that, what are the top priorities for the town? Um, and then, you know, feel free to just pipe in, get, hopefully we'll get kind of a dialogue going, but if you're, if you're feeling like you're not being heard, you can use the raised hand and Faye and I will both be looking out for that. You can kind of wave or raise your real hand. Um, you can put a comment in the chat or you can just speak up, which I hope, my hope is that there'll be kind of a dialogue, you know, I'll go over those questions with you. So the last piece of information I have to bring to the table today is the data that we collected. Um, so this is the sidewalk network in Dudley. Uh, and you can see, as we said, you know, the, the big, you know, area of sidewalks are, the big connection points where things are sort of running into that are West Main Street and also Dudley Oxford Road. Um, and then a little bit on Mill Street and Schofield Ave. Um, the condition of your sidewalks is overall quite, quite, you know, decent. Um, but there are quite a few areas, you know, this 14% where there is no ramp. So what that basically means is that you have a sidewalk that ends and it doesn't, you know, go out into anything or you have a crosswalk and there's no ramp into the crosswalk. Um, so that was sort of the main thing that stood out to me, um, in terms of the condition of your sidewalks and ramps. So I'm just going to put, you know, again, like I said, trying to recreate that experience of kind of looking at a map, thinking about the area, um, and asking some of those questions. I'm just going to put this map up. Um, and I wonder, maybe I'll just start out with the question. Um, if any of you kind of just have, you know, I know you saw, many of you may have seen the questions ahead of time or you may have kind of been thinking about things since our last presentation. And I wonder, uh, kind of looking at this, thinking specifically about the walkability pedestrian infrastructure, if you have any, you know, initial first project ideas, thoughts, problems that, that come to mind.
Hello, Gemma, if I may, uh, the Office Center Road, Dudley Hill Road, there's, there's the cemetery, uh, of which there was some controversy a year or so ago in regards to that, but there is an existing sidewalk there, which is now barricaded. Uh, obviously with the snow on it, it's probably unusable anyway, but there are barricades at either end of that. And as the, go around the corner, uh, in the direction of Shepherd Hill, there is a residence and a little bit further down, there's a sidewalk that continues and it continues on past the solar facility and back, back down towards Shepherd Hill. But there is a gap there, if you will, uh, coming after the cemetery and proceeding on Dudley Oxford Road, onto Dudley Oxford Road. I was on the, it was my understanding that somewhere along the way, mention had been made of trying to complete that so that there would be access coming down, uh, past the cemetery, around the corner and over to the continuous sidewalk that approaches or approaching Shepherd Hill. Uh, with that gap there and the intersection, that would be a particularly dangerous, dangerous area for any pedestrian traffic. And with the snow on the roads, obviously, uh, it probably advisable that no one try to walk that. I don't know whether, uh, that's been discussed in your assessment or considered in your assessment or not.
Yeah, no, so that's exactly what we're trying to get, just like, you know, letting us know of those kind of areas that are of high priority for you. So if I understand correctly, you're talking about, uh, this area where the intersection that you're talking about is where Dudley Hill Road intersects with Dudley Oxford Road? Is that the, the corner you're?
Yeah, Ramshorn Road is off to the, the other side here.
Okay, and the issues there, what, what are the safety issues there, um, from your perspective?
Well, the immediate issue is the sidewalk in front of the cemetery is barricaded and I assume that to be for safety reasons. Then there is a gap. Uh, there is a sidewalk, again, an unsafe one, I assume, in front of the cemetery, but there is a gap there before the sidewalk continues the other side of the intersection. And then the sidewalk continues up toward Shepherd Hill. But that gap, I think, needs to be completed, uh, as well as obviously the, the safety issue with regards to the cemetery in front of the, the sidewalk in front of the cemetery. Also, this, something done to upgrade it to fix that issue.
You get, you get a couple, you get a couple of issues there. I mean, for starters, then intersection's horrible because of the fact that when you come up from, if you're coming down Ramshorn Road towards that intersection, uh, it's actually almost like a, uh, a square or whatever, where the, where it actually, it branches into a Y, depending if you're going to go left or right.
Right.
Yeah, right where you've got that pointer right there, that intersection is, is problematic and then you've got a blind corner there. And when you come out of Ramshorn Road and you're, as you're coming out Ramshorn Road, you're directly lined up with the old Dudley Meeting House, that house. And I think that that's very close to the road, as I recall. So I don't know whether or not there's even room there. I'm, I'm venturing to guess that's why the sidewalk never went there in the first place.
Uh, if I may, uh, you will very frequently, the season is not such that you're going to see it now, but very frequently in the spring and in the fall, you'll see the, the schools, probably the, the high school primarily, uh, cross-country and track squads and other teams running in that area. And as Mr. Vitrova has mentioned, that intersection in itself, regardless of the sidewalk issue, is dangerous, the way it is currently configured in terms of those kids trying to come through there. And they usually come through in pretty good numbers too.
Yeah, so, uh, it seems, I mean, in terms of the, the issue of spacing, um, it's certainly something that I would, you know, we, we can look back on those details, but I wonder also, you know, it's very close to the, there's two, this is two different schools here, if I understand, the Dudley.
There's a middle school and a high school, yes.
And a high school, right. Um, and I wonder if there's, in, just in terms of kind of continuing in this area, I wonder if there's other conversation to be had about the school itself and, and, you know, in a broader sense, where it's, where you see high school students acting to? Are there a lot of high school students, you know, walking to?
Okay, so, interesting thing about that is, uh, this is one of the suggestions I was going to float. If we look at Mason Road, um, you can see that the, the sidewalks currently go down from the school to the end of Mason Road and stop there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the question would be, could we have, would it be possible to do a project that would actually have uninterrupted sidewalk from that end of Mason Road all the way out to the fire station on West Main Street where it would pick up the existing sidewalks network on West Main Street?
And if I may, I think there is some part of a sidewalk in back of the fire station going in the direction of Mason Road School.
Yeah, then it stops there, it's.
Except for the school.
To your point, though, that would be great to have the three schools connected and to have pedestrian traffic or something that could pass as a, as a safe way for people to move from one to the other. Uh, the issue that you mentioned earlier, Mr. Vitrova, regarding the, the proximity of the house to the road, uh, up by the cemetery end of things, that is going to be a major hurdle, I think, with Mason Road because a number of those residences are very close to the road and there, there's not a lot of room there at all. That road really looks like it's been as soon as the, the 17th or 19th century than it is the 21st. And I see, honestly, I see people walking there even during the winter months and obviously with no sidewalks and no plowing guns or, there's no removal on what would have been a, a sidewalk area, those folks are out on the road. And if you put an Amazon van and a school bus on the road at the same time, there is no place for them to go.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, I mean, I, one thing I noticed on that road was, so this is an elementary school here, this second school. And I noticed that from the elementary school to the, um, fire station there, there was actually what we call in the planning world, a goat path, which is basically where there is no sidewalk, but the, um, the actual dirt has been packed down by feet. So you really know that people are using that corridor a lot.
That was actually paved.
It was actually paved.
That was actually paved. I remember when I, well, don't want to go to ancient history, but when I was a kid, that was paved.
Okay, yeah, so, I mean, I, I saw that there. Um, and I, I wonder, do you know about that parcel on the corner there? Is that, is that, does anybody know if that's a town property or if it's a private? You know, it's, it's looks like a wooded area on the corner there.
Well, the town has wells over there, so I think we might be getting into, I think that's in that Aquifer District or something over there.
Right, and then I noticed, I noticed on the map that said, uh, there's a Dudley Beach here? Is that, okay. So there's another kind of element there, which is the connection to, uh, you know, recreational spaces, right? So the idea of, uh, you know, there's the town beach, there's a couple other recreational spaces on here of these, um, trails, right? There's the.
Yeah, so the access to the town beach now is basically people park in back of that school and then there is a path, pretty wide path, a goat path, I guess is what you would call it, through the woods that takes you to the beach. Because where the road actually goes up to the beach, there's no parking over there. There's all residences right on top of each other and, uh, there's really, there's no room for cars to park.
And is there, uh, what is the pedestrian situation like getting from the street there to the road? Is it like a really, uh, you know, because another thing you can think about with Complete Streets is this idea that you don't necessarily need sidewalks on every street where people walk, but you want every street where people walk for people to feel safe. So if it's a, if it's a, you know, a residential area, maybe all you do is kind of make sure that the shoulder is wide enough that people feel like there's, there's a space for walking. Or, you know, if it's a really, really residential area, maybe you just, you know, have the streets shared by cars and people. But I'm curious on that particular piece, is there anything that would kind of improve the, um, safety? Improve the sort of, um, feeling that that's a, an asset in the town and kind of attracting people to that area in terms of?
Well, what if that, what if that walkway that leads from the school's parking lot to the town beach? What if that was paved and lit?
That would be great. So lighting, I will say this, lighting, paving is certainly a part of the Complete Streets. Lighting is eligible, but it is a fairly expensive, pricey item. So sometimes, you know, you have to think about how you want to spread that out across projects. Um, but it's certainly something I would, you know, say if, if you're interested in lighting a space, certainly note it down and think, and you know, we can think about how to break that out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to say, I'm not in love with any of these ideas. I'm just throwing some ideas out there and then I'd like to know what, you know, maybe some members of the public think about it or another, other, obviously what your other Planning Board members think.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the right mindset.
Would these funds also be able to be used if you wanted to, um, say, construct a walkway that's not adjacent to a public street?
Yes, absolutely. So that, that would be considered like what they would call in the building blocks kind of piece of shared use path. So you can use this to do like a paved path that could be for bikes, for pedestrians, or you could use it to do a, uh, uh, you know, specifically a, a connection to your bike path or an extension of your bike path or to build a new bike path. Right, so it, it can be sidewalks, it can be pedestrian infrastructure that's connected to the street, but it can also be pedestrian infrastructure just really for pedestrians. That's certainly something you could do. Um, and before I move on, was there anything that people had on the, on the tip of their tongue that they were hoping to get in there?
What about a, uh, what about a parking area for a recreational area that is already, you know, uh, if we had a recreational area in town and there wasn't a parking area or if there was an unofficial dirt parking area, could you get that paved?
So you can't pay, you can't fund a parking area with this, but you can fund rearranging parking that already exists. So you can fund sort of the, you know, if you have, um, parking along a street, you can fund, you know, moving that parking to other places to make room for other things or reconfiguring how the parking goes. I don't know that you could, you, we could think about, you know, how to do that. I'm, I would certainly say for Faye, who's taking notes right now, to put it on, on the list of kind of potential things that are, are, you know, in the thought process. So, okay, I think the next question, just to kind of, you know, expand a little, I think that, that area we're talking about is certainly, you know, me and Faye were talking a little bit about, you know, what are the kind of key areas? Um, and that's certainly, you know, what we were talking about. I wonder, uh, just expanding out a little bit, looking at some of those other key areas where people are walking too often. One that came up a lot in the Webster-Dudley corridor study was Nichols College. And I wonder if there's any thoughts about sort of the connection for Nichols College students to downtown, if there's any, any issues with that or if you see any opportunities there?
Yeah, I live on Airport Road. Uh, am I still muted? No, I don't think so.
You're all good.
You'll see that here and that has become a major access road as far as Nichols College is concerned, coming up from West Main. Uh, there's a lot more foot traffic on that road than there used to be. Uh, the big attraction being the supermarket at the bottom of the hill and there's a dollar store there and, uh, there's the Cumberland Farms and there's a pizzas, uh, a couple of pizzerias very close by. So there's, there's, there's a fair amount of foot traffic there, seasonal, but there's definitely a fair amount of foot traffic there. And again, that's also an area where you're likely to see some kids out there running as well. Uh, the road is fairly wide, which is not the case with many roads in Dudley, but, uh, the sidewalks are limited. There's a very small area down at the bottom, uh, the intersection with, uh, West Main, but that's about it. And I think it extends maybe as far as the bank branch, but that, that would be the extent of it. I assume most of the, the traffic that I see, the seasonal traffic, ours, Nichols students, they look to be at least of that age group anyway.
Do any of you guys know, uh, you know, on Dudley Hill Road with St. Anthony's Churches, does, do any of you guys know whether or not there's a sidewalk there? I mean, it's not shown on this map, but I thought there was.
There's, there's not. No, there is none.
No, okay.
I, I think what, I, I know that Gemma, and I'm going to digress for a minute. You mentioned 197 and we can't do anything with that. But I noticed in your, one of your earlier, uh, I looked at one of your screens and it was noted that the sidewalk was three foot wide at one point. And I have walked that and if that thing is three foot wide, then I must be seven feet tall because that thing doesn't look anywhere near three feet wide to me. And that's the only sidewalk we've got and that's the main artery, if you will, in terms of this town. It's a shame that we can't do something about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, so there are, one of the things I can talk about at the next, um, meeting is some of the other options for funding, you know, other kinds of infrastructure in town. So a bunch of our towns have paired Complete Streets funding, uh, with like CDBG funding, with tip, uh, and tap funding. Um, so there are other. Um, so there are other, you know, ways that you can kind of pair this. Um, but, but the, it's, you know, it's, it's really great to have a complete streets plan because what that does is kind of open you up to. The ability to apply for those funds, right? You know, it, it's sort of a, uh, you know, it's a, it's a process of talking about these things, but it's also. About, you know, getting these things on paper so that you can apply for the funds from complete streets, but also so that you can, you know, apply for the funds from other areas. So I would, I would certainly welcome, you know, I know I've said that those two streets are not eligible and I want to make that really clear because I know, you know, those are such. Key arteries in your town. Um, and it's just, you know, it's, it's a little disappointing that they're not fundable specifically through this program. But again, like, you know, thinking about the connectivity of those streets to the other streets. And also thinking about what is needed on those streets as well. Faye is definitely going to be noting that stuff down, um, because we can. You know, these are, this is the time to have the conversation and, and we can make recommendations about other funding sources. That you could then comp, you know, use to complement the complete streets, uh, grant program. So I'm curious, where you were talking about the sidewalks being quite narrow. Um, was that this area we're kind of near where you were talking about around where Airport Road or is that?
In here, I think it's probably across from Precision Autobody, uh, in that vicinity. There, there's a very, there's a, there's a stretch there where it's extremely narrow. Uh, there's another area up further where it's often overgrown with vegetation and it's very hard to negotiate. There, there are so many things wrong with what's going on there right now. I, I, it, it probably needs its own complete streets program, independent of anything else that's going out of town.
Yeah, so definitely Faye is going to note those things down because that's something we can have, you know, have a conversation about. And I guess continuing kind of on that idea. You, you know, you just did, uh, your town is just went, was engaged in a planning process around that corridor specifically. And, and you know, it's connection to Webster. You did the court, Webster Dudley Corridor Study, uh, and. Thinking about the connection of West Main Street to other places. So, you know, I know the connection of West Main Street to. Mill Street or connecting down to some of these, um, bike trails, uh, in, in the southern part, uh, long, you know, near Carpenter Street. Schofield Ave. Is there any, you know, thoughts or ideas about, you know, what could be added or improved in that respect? Maybe I'll narrow it a little bit. What about, um, the connection of West Main Street, uh, and Mill Street? I know you guys had talked about, um, or there had been some conversation in the town about, you know. Bringing a little bit more development around the mill there and trying to.
Well, yeah, we got this mill overlay district and we've got this developer that's looking to move forward with a major residential project there. So it would be nice, but I'll tell you, I, I would love to meet the guy who could unscrew that mess. Because between that coming in and the. The coffee, uh, the donut shop there on the corner and the traffic nightmare. And then as far as sidewalks in that area go. You've got the, the mill, the corner of the mill building literally comes up to the paved edge of the road. And then there's another building which was also part of the mill originally. It used to be a, it used to be a catwalk that went across. So you could go from one building to the other. That's gone, but the buildings are there. And there's absolutely no room for a sidewalk. It's literally, it's, it's paved right between, you know, the, the, if, if you can picture it. There's no way to safely walk around that corner, which is unfortunate because people have noted. Have made mention in the past that you've got a sidewalk that comes right up to that front of that building and then. It disappears and then it starts again right on the other side. As it goes around the corner, but you have to, you have to get off the sidewalk, walk around the blind corner. Or somewhat blind corner and then get back on the sidewalk again, which is really a dangerous situation. But. Other than moving the buildings or making that a one-way street, so you had it narrow enough to fit a sidewalk in there, I don't see how you fix that.
Unfortunately, I, 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 I think Mr. Wetrova is hitting upon a sore point because. Most of us have probably seen what Dunkin' Donuts looks like on a weekend morning. And with that development of the mill property. Uh, and not that far away, we've got the, uh, the Ethan Allen Mill being developed to probably increasing traffic there. And maybe more of it coming towards Dunkin' Donuts. Uh, every day is probably going to look like Saturday and Sunday in front of Dunkin' Donuts. In that congested area that you have right there. And if you're a pedestrian, uh, I hope your insurance is paid up.
So, I mean, I wonder, that's really good information. And, and like I said, you know, we can bring to the table some ideas, but. I, I wonder what your thoughts are about other, you know, to increase the safety there, other kinds of infrastructure besides just sidewalks. So things like, you know, an alert sign or a speed bump.
Yeah, you need it at 197 where you won't let us do it.
Yeah, I mean, the state, the, the state of Massachusetts. So the re, I'll, I'll, I'll just go a tiny bit into the reason for that. The reason for that is that those are state roads. So there's a separate program that you can apply for called the tip program. Uh, so first of all, the roads are maintained by the state. So, uh, they would. I, so I, I'm not sure exactly what the agreement is with, with the town of Dudley, but the state has some, uh, jurisdiction basically over those roads. And then there's a separate program called, uh, the tip program or the tap program. And you can apply for funds through that program. And you can actually, you're actually eligible for a lot more money through that program. So it's, it tends to be bigger projects. And again, I can, uh, in our next meeting or in the meeting after that. Um, bring someone in to talk about that program and, and, you know, see how there might be, you know, ways to kind of. Integrate the, the potential for complete streets funding into the potential for tip and tap programming, uh, tip and tap funding. So that you are, you know, like it's, it's good that you're thinking about this as a system, right? It's. I don't want the, the fact that complete streets only funds, um, you know, certain streets to preclude you from thinking about the overall system. Of what's happening and where pedestrians are, you know, facing hazards and where cars are kind of getting tripped up.
I think you had mentioned that is actually a little section down there right before you get into Webster where. Um, that, 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 that part that actually qualified for, for funding. Um, but I'm trying to think of what's down there that you really need. Like, for instance, a crosswalk. I don't think you need a crosswalk to go, I don't think you're going to have that many people coming out of the, uh. The new apartments at the mill that want to cross the street right there and have to go to Napa. I mean, what do you get? A Napa and a gas station right there, right?
You got a, you got a Dunkin' Donuts, but that's drive-through only anyway.
Well, no, the Dunkin' Donuts is on their side of the street, so they don't need a crosswalk.
Right. So you, you wouldn't be looking to walk to it anyway, no matter where you were coming from, because you're going to be driving there. Uh, the question, I, I did a question there. The, uh, I'm not sure of the name of the road. Uh, the corner with the, uh, Dunkin' Donuts is, and then across the street, there's a small antique shop. Uh, would it be conceivable to, because of the increased traffic that we anticipate that when the mill development is completed? To close that off to vehicular traffic and make it pedestrian only at some point, just to try and take that, uh. Little bit of congestion out of the picture.
Yeah, but now you're, now you're going to increase the traffic flow going right up to that light where our lovely donut shop is that we were just talking about.
Well, that's the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room. We can't get rid of the donut shop.
No, I, I, I don't have a problem with the donut shop. It's the traffic. We're trying to figure out ways to. Traffic situation.
No, there's no parking, nowhere near enough parking, that's for sure.
I mean, so I, I think that, you know, there's a conversation to be had on that border area about. Sometimes just making some aesthetic improvements. So, you know, putting in project elements to do with. You know, just improving, you know, I, I'm thinking of the bridge there that goes over, uh, the Prince River. You know, even just making some aesthetic improvements there could kind of invite pedestrians from, you know, the Webster side into the Dudley side. Um, and, you know, I know in the Webster Dudley Corridor Study, they talked about this idea of, you know, moving people and kind of making them feel. Safe and, and attracted, um, coming down from, um. With college along West Main and, and creating more of a feeling of, um. More of a feeling of sort of a, a real, um, walkable downtown that people want to, you know, spend time. In and, and maybe that attracts also some, some businesses that people want to go in and out of as well. If you have any thoughts about that and.
Yeah, I, I have some thoughts, but I don't know if I can bring them up without insulting people from Webster. I'm, no, seriously, where, where are these people from Nichols College wanting to walk to and on downtown Webster? Do they need, do they, do they need more tattoos or haircuts?
I think the idea is just, you know, building up a, a movement of people and attracting people to downtown, downtown. To create a market, right? To kind of stimulate, um, new developments that are going to, you know, im- improve. The, the feeling that there's a walkable downtown, you know, with businesses that you can go in and out of, um. I mean.
You got to realize, I grew up in this town. I remember, you know, being a kid and Friday night was shopping night. And my parents took me and we went downtown. They did all their shopping on Main Street Webster. And then we went, you know, we went for pizza or something, a bite to eat. That was, that was Friday night. You had a hardware store down. Closing, clothing stores, shoe stores, and you bought all that stuff. And now everything's changed. So now. You've got these buildings there that have, um, a lot of apartments up above. And I don't think I'd be speaking out of turn if I said that more than one person has told me that. They would not walk Main Street Webster in the evening any longer, that they don't feel. That it, it's, you know, has that. That small town flavor that you're, you're thinking of, that, that was once there.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I think the vision is, you know, the vision is thinking about the future as well and how. You know, especially with COVID and a lot of malls closing down, how is that going to affect, you know, the future of Main Streets? And, and I think, you know, West Main Street and Dudley as well and, and, you know, trying to kind of think about ways to rebuild that. Feeling of, you know, a, a downtown that people want to walk in, like, you know, was in the past, like it was in the past. At least to, to some extent and right, you know, small ways of improving the infrastructure to kind of. Um, you know, create, create that sense that maybe I want to go take a walk on, you know, West Main. Um, but again, you know, it's, it's about your community and, you know, what your needs are. Um, but yeah, I just, I was curious about sort of the connectivity to West Main Street. Is there any other places where, um. People, you're seeing people walk a lot between, uh, you know, whether that's between West Main Street and. Um, some of the schools or, you know, other, one, one thing we didn't talk much about is. Some of the recreational resources down here. Uh, so there's this trail here. Um, and then there's another trail here. I believe this is the.
Jimmy, if I may, here's a thought. Uh, I, I, one other. Bit of pedestrian traffic. I, I, I think your sense is that you want to try to attract. Students from Nichols College down West Main and into Webster. I don't think that's going to happen a heck of a lot, to be quite honest with you. Uh, hats off to your trying, but good luck on that. I, I do see a lot of folks in terms of the senior housing that are going across. West Main onto Airport Road to get to the supermarket. Obviously, the post office isn't that far distant, so. Uh, the fire station certainly, there's whatever there is in terms of commercials activity in Webster, I mean, in Dudley rather, is pretty much concentrated for them in that area. Uh, there are trails over here. I don't know that they have much in the way of access to the trails. Coming out of the senior housing.
Yeah, so that's, that's really interesting. So do you mind the senior housing? So I have on here this little pink heart. I believe that's the, um, senior center.
Well, the senior center is in the, the town building, the town municipal complex. Uh, okay, so that's down here, but the senior housing is. Uh, trying to find it up here somewhere, probably, uh, has somebody helped me with the geography?
Yeah, it's kind of like, uh, where Airport Road comes down where that intersection is. It's, it's just up a little bit, right about there.
Yeah, we, okay. So there's, it looks like we have trails here, but there looks like there's, there's nothing getting there.
Yeah, so there's, there's a trail here and then there's the, I'm trying to, I think it's on this one. The Quay Bog River Bike Way. Um, actually, both of these. This trail here and this trail here are both technically part of that, uh, system. There's some, uh, at least at the state trails level, there's been some discussion about, uh, a connection. Between these two sections that would go into Connecticut. Um, but there are, so I, I wanted to get a better idea of kind of what those trail access point looks like. Um, and Faye can talk a little bit more because she had some, so she'll talk a little bit at the end about some of the things she noticed. As she was walking around collecting data physically in the space. Um, but there are. Excuse me. Um, it seems like there's a parking lot here where people can get off, park and, and walk on this trail. Um, and then up here, it seems like there's just a sort of, uh, path going off of the road. And then I'm not 100% sure what the trail heads look like here, but I don't actually think that this. Uh, I, I'm not sure, you know, down on this road along, at the end of sort of. I'm not sure if this is a continuation of Carpenter Road, but I'm not sure what that, uh, looks like. But there's certainly some. And, and Faye can talk about this a little bit more, but there's, I would certainly think that there's some opportunities to make. Connections there, maybe even, you know, connecting the trail to the road here.
Just, just so you know, uh, at the end of Dudley Hill Road where it comes down to West Main Street. See that little dead end road right there? That goes down to the, what used to be the town dump. Oh, yeah. So that's what that property, that's what that property right there, that, we've got the highway garage is down that road. The transfer station is down that road. That's what's down there now. And the capped off old town dump is down that road.
Okay, interesting. So, yeah, so there's that, there's this. Uh, there's this trail here. That I believe, so I believe that's, there's a parking lot down here where you can access this trail. And I believe there's a parking lot down here, or at least a sort of area of, um. Grass that you can access here. But I don't know, uh, the senior housing is like here. I don't know if that's a possible.
No, it's, it's, I think it'd be back here more if I'm not mistaken.
Right there.
Right there?
Where, where that, that big black mark is across from Airport Road, it's in that area.
In that area, okay.
Yes.
And, and I guess, again, going back to the thought I had was that if we've got a trail here, but there's no access for these people. And some of these folks may, I, I'm not sure what percentage of them have any transportation in terms of driving to a, a parking lot. Uh, accessing a trail from the parking lot, or if in some cases they may have no access to transportation, other than what little public transportation there is. So getting to one of those trails looks to be a pretty daunting task. If you've got to depend on whatever amounts of sidewalks. Uh, whatever we have for sidewalks, you've got to go around a rather circuitous route to get there. You know, it might be a lot, uh, is there any opportunity there in terms of making that available to those folks?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a great idea. I would think that the connection would either have to happen where you were talking about on the end of the dump there. Or you could maybe make a connection, um, into this neighborhood here somehow. Um, but that, I mean, that would be a, a, an issue of looking at the parcels themselves and seeing if there's any opportunities to connect there. Um, and there might, you know. Hmm, I mean, I'm trying to think if there's any other ways to come at this. Certainly there's, you know, you can think about connecting things on sort of this side of the map. Uh, connecting these two trails together. Um, but I, I, I'm trying to think if there's any. Or ways to think about connecting it to this more West Main Street side of things. Now, that could be something we looked into if you were interested in, you know, what are the actual parcels that are there and is there an opportunity, uh, to do something like that?
Emma, there are a couple of other things I could mention. Um, I think Richard pointed out that where you have the senior center located is incorrect. It's actually in the municipal complex. But further east of that icon. At the northeast corner of Schofield and Brandon is the town library. I think you could put that down as a significant destination for people that, that want to walk there. And then another one would be the courthouse, which is sort of down the far end of West Main Street. I'm not sure how many people actually want to walk there, but it's certainly a significant, uh, um, you know, destination for, for activity. So you might want to call that out as well. you might want to call that out as well.
Actually, there are, I've seen a number of my neighbors, if you will, who will walk up in the direction of the courthouse and across on the Lions Road, and then up in that residential area and back of the courthouse. Uh, that's a fairly common walking destination for people who are are living on Airport Road and want to avoid what is pretty crazy traffic on Airport Road much of the year. Uh, so that's, you know, the courthouse itself, not a destination, but the area adjacent to it has become something of a destination.
Yeah, another, another issue with that is one's on 197 and one's on Schofield Ave, which is 31 or whatever.
12. Route 12, Schofield Ave is Route 12.
Yeah, Schofield, you can, you know, Schofield Ave is eligible, so anything along there.
Gemma, I believe that's a state road as well, Route 12. I'm not sure that
12, I believe, well, actually, it it ends, um, I think it says state highway ends kind of where the Little Plaza is where Gaslight was.
I think that's right. Yeah, I think what the 12, 197 stretch is town maintained, but once you turn south onto Route 12, I believe that becomes a state road at that point.
Yeah, it's like the state road from uh West Main, the this traffic light down to, is that Zoe's, the pizza place?
And Gemma, the other destination I would uh mention is the the Chase Mill, uh, which is the former Ethan Allen property that Richard mentioned. You show the Stevens Mill, but further to the south, about where you're pointing, that's the location of the Chase Mill, which has just been approved by the board for a marijuana cultivation, processing and retail operation. It's gonna um employ lots of people. We'll have public driving there to purchase marijuana products, perhaps walking. Although the streets there are kind of narrow, I'm not sure you can do much in terms of new sidewalks, but there might be some signage and and other kinds of activities that might make it safer for people to walk through that area.
They're gonna need really wide sidewalks with lots of, lots of guidance.
Hey, cool. So I think if there's, oh, sorry, did I miss something? Okay, I think, uh, if there's not any else, certainly the conversation about sidewalks and pedestrian stuff will continue. Um, but I want to make sure we touch on all the, all of those kind of areas of complete streets, so I'll go to the next map. Um, and this is a map to kind of just get you thinking about the um the bike infrastructure itself. So this is a map showing um some different data to do with bikes. Uh, so the purple is the existing bike trails that you have in town. Uh, the yellow, or I'll, I'll do the red first. The red is um, what were identified, what were at some point proposed as bike trails, so um, this red here is the Webster River Walk. Um, this red here is the connection point that they had talked about in Connecticut between these two segments of the Quay Bog River Bike Way. Um, the orange is what was identified by uh, Mass Trails as potential trails, so it's not anything that's been proposed, but it's sort of opportunities that they've identified. Um, and then the blue here was identified um, as part of the Webster Dudley Corridor Study as some places where it might be nice to have um, bike lanes on the road itself. So, you know, a a set aside lane that that bikes could travel. Um, so, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Excuse me, Gemma, is this Mason Road?
Yeah, it is.
How? Squeeze a sidewalk in there, not on a bike path. I honestly, I mean, that road at some points is no wider than most driveways. Uh, a- a- again, it's it's a 19th century cow pasture. It's not even a goat path in some areas. I, the porset lines. When you have it plowed as it is now with the snow on either side, you have very little room on either side of that. I don't know how you could squeeze a bike path in there. I hats off to you. I'd love to see one up there. That'd be a great thing, because you do have a lot of kids off of there, a lot of the family residences, and I'm sure that they would welcome a bike path. Uh, not a, I'd also have to mention that it also apparently will terminate up here at the high school and the middle school, which would be great for the kids, but I don't know how you're going to get a bike path on a Mason Road. If somebody out there on this panel or this board knows how you can do that, then uh you are eligible for some sort of an award.
About a bike bridge that goes all over the road.
Elevated, all right, let's do that.
I was gonna say, Bill knows, but he won't tell us, but
Did anybody, before they proposed this, did anybody drive or walk that road?
So I actually wasn't part of this. I I was grabbing some, you know, what I tried to do with this map was pull up together as many, you know, data sources that I could of people of sort of what had been discussed or put on paper in the past regarding bikes, but that's exactly what, you know, we're hoping to get, right? So, you know, show you guys something and hear from your experience actually living in town, walking these roads, driving these roads, potentially biking these roads, you know, what is the reaction? So I think that that's actually really useful to us. Um, and I wonder, you know,
Actually, if if I may continue, even 197, I I think somewhere along the way, people got confused. They thought that this, the width of Main Street and Webster continued the length of 197 in Dudley. And it's not. 197 in Dudley is much narrower. I don't know the exact square, you know, the footage, but it's not the same road at all. And I again, I question where you could put a bike path safely on that road, which at times of the day is pretty darn congested.
Yes, I I'm curious to hear from you guys, because I think you know, there's two things you can think about around creating bike uh, and the first thing is, you know, where are people already biking? And they might be biking in very hazardous conditions because there's sort of nothing there to even tell people that there could be bikers, right? Even give, you know, drivers or um other vehicles any kind of you know, notice that 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 space is shared. Um, so I wonder from you guys, one, where where are biking, where are people biking? You know, whether that's you know, general residents or whether that's students, you know, thinking about if there are groups of students who are biking around. Um, is there people taking their kids biking places? So where is that already happening? And then the other question is, sort of in an ideal world, where would you be able to bike between? What would be great for residents to be able to bike to? And then we can kind of move from there and think about, you know, what are, what are some options?
I'm seeing a lot more people walking than biking in Dudley.
Right.
I don't see a lot of kids at Nichols with bikes or riding bikes, honestly. I mean, they're either on foot or they they have vehicles.
I didn't notice, yeah, I didn't notice still soul bikes. I don't see kids on bikes anymore.
I I do occasionally. Uh, I would, I would think it'd be great if we had something that gave, provided access to all of the schools in town, Mason Road Elementary, the middle school, the high school, uh, from there to the 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 library, as was mentioned earlier. Uh, that would be great to the time, and from there to the town beach, or including the town beach and perhaps some of these nature trails that have been identified already. Uh, I think that would be almost ideal. I I don't know that you necessarily want to take bikers into some of the more commercial areas of town, just because I don't think they're necessarily the safest area, but certainly I wouldn't consider them the safest area.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I think, I I, so we had a similar kind of conversation with uh North Brookfield, which is a a kind of different type of town, but they had a similar conversation around, you know, they were feeling like having bikes go right into their downtown wasn't very safe, but a lot of the potential for biking in town was like connecting recreational areas and also making it safer for students to bike. So we talked a lot about uh there, you know, doing things like thinking a little bit more about, you know, what are other routes that people, what are other routes that we can promote biking along? Can we put some signs, you know, if there's, you know, if there's some neighborhood roads that connect to schools? Can we put some signs along there? Can we put some pavement markings or, you know, make a wider shoulder to create, you know, a a a sense of safety for people who bike there and create a kind of alternative route for people to walk and bike between schools and key recreational areas? I wonder if there's any ideas kind of along that, those lines. And again, I'm just throwing stuff out here, so if you're like, no, there's no, no ideas, that's fine as well.
I can't think of two recreational areas that you'd want to bike between in the town of Dudley.
Any, any places that you can potentially biking to, you know, after school, maybe they're riding their bikes to the Dudley Beach, or maybe they are riding their bikes to, um, you know, one of the other green spaces in town. Or even riding their bikes from, you know, their their home, their neighborhoods um to school.
Well, yeah, you've got kids going up Mason Road. You know, um, I see, I see teenagers on bicycles on Mason Road from time to time.
If I could, um, I'm Fay, I didn't get to introduce myself, um, but I'm an assistant transportation planner for CMRPC. Um, recently, I've been working on a bicycle connectivity index for our region, and I would just pulled it up actually to look at Mason Road. And it looks like it's about 24 to 28 feet wide, which is accommodable for shared lanes. Um, you only need 12 feet of lane to do that, so that could be incorporated there, if that makes sense.
Where did you find 24 feet?
So, well, I had um done an analysis using um MassDOT data, and I used Google um Earth pretty much just to go and do my own analysis.
All right, I I, if I may, I don't, I'm not sure where you're located, but if you have opportunity to sometime drive that road, I I think you'll get an appreciation of it, yeah, regardless of what Google Earth shows you that would indicate that there in the whole lot to deal with there in terms of space available.
Yeah, and cert, I think certainly, like, we see that a lot in, it's new, it's New England. We've got a lot of old towns where the roads are genuine.
It's not straight to begin with, all right, and there are a number of feeder roads off it, but I don't think this even indicates the extent to which there's traffic coming onto it. It's, it looks great on a map, and uh maybe in Google Earth, but uh the reality of in terms of driving it and maybe winter is even worse.
Well, the other, the other thing to keep in mind with any town, uh, any road here in town is that when you're going down the road and you're looking at how wide it is paved, that doesn't necessarily mean that's how wide the area that is owned by the town is.
Okay.
In other words, lots of times you've got, you know, another 10 feet from that paved edge of the road that goes into what looks like somebody's front yard, but in reality is owned by the town. But the town still has jurisdiction over that. They may mow it, they may put plantings on it and everything, but the reality is that that's still part of town property. I mean, uh, the street that I live on is a small dead end road. It it's probably only 15 feet wide as far as pavement goes, but I know for a fact that when they came down and put the sewer lines in and they flagged the limits, you know, it was obviously was a lot wider than any of us realized.
Okay, I I I appreciate the clarification, and I suspect that's probably what Google Earth is is coming back with as a reference, because I don't, I can't envision some parts of Mason Road as being as wide as 24 feet.
Oh, I I agree. When you're looking at the paved areas, you're absolutely right, Rich. When you get into some of those areas like around that bend, uh, right before June Street right there, that's kind of a tight little bottleneck right there. But it's possible, I don't know for sure, but it may be possible that you could still squeeze in a sidewalk on one of the, one side of the street.
If I could break in just for a couple of seconds, guys, I think we're getting lost in the weeds a little bit. I think that my interpretation was that we're kind of talking big picture and just trying to get some general ideas. Um, as we can see from this plan, as from some of the other uh plans that are in the presentation, as far as traffic count is concerned, when you go from Webster on Route 197, you're talking 15,000 cars. I came with, with the denominator was was per hour or whatever, is you start getting into Dudley, you've got 12,000. And a lot of those cars are going off on the Schofield Ave, but there's also more that are going on to Mason Road and on to Airport Road. And so maybe this isn't the best place for the conversation right now, because we're talking more streets and traffic, but we all know Mason Road is inadequate. Uh, if we're thinking about what's going to happen 20 years from now, 25 years from now, if we start talking about the problems we're going to be facing then, we've already lost. So maybe the bigger picture isn't just, you know, how wide is Mason Road, but what, how can we address that issue? Do we try to um square away the corners of traffic around Nichols College and bring people down Airport Road to give them to 197? And then if if so, using some of the this, the, you know, the better streets, um, the complete streets process here by building sidewalks in airport and bike trails in Airport Road would probably possibly get some of the traffic off of Mason Road and have to create more of a corridor that way. So, um, I know we've been talking about this for an hour. I don't know if we have to solve all the problems right now in this tonight's meeting. But, um, I don't know, Gemma, I'm sure your team has a couple more good points you guys want to bring over to us, and then we can kind of get out to the next point, or?
Yeah, yeah, I think you're absolutely right that uh we don't need to solve all the problems, and I I'll tell you, like, the issue of of road width is the big one that comes up with every town, and it is the place where it's most easy to kind of get into the weeds. Um, but I think, I think we can probably move on from that, um, and I'll show you the other stuff we have, but I'll, you know, we definitely have Mason Road on the list of places to kind of think about the solutions for that, and hopefully next time we meet, we can, you know, put forth some of the different ideas, and certainly the idea of, you know, that's something you guys would have to think more about of, do you want to divert traffic, you know, down other roads besides Mason Road, is, you know, is there, is there some reconfiguring around that, that that could be done? But I'll keep that in mind um as well. Uh, so these are just a few little last tidbits uh of data that I wanted to just kind of make sure that I brought into the conversation. So this is the regional trail system that's in the area. So the purple one is um the the Quay Bog Trail, and it's actually in in Dudley, two sections. So there's this little tiny section here, um, and then there's this section here that runs along uh 133, yeah, 333, 13, 313. Um, and the section that goes into Connecticut is actually not in existence yet. Um, but there's potential, so, you know, there's potential for there to be connections uh in the future, you know, thinking four or five years down the line through the uh French River Greenway project, which is kind of piece by piece coming together, and the Trolley Line uh project in Connecticut, that's kind of piece by piece. Uh, so this is just a sort of wider regional view of those trails. Um, and I wanted to kind of put that in front of your eyes to to see if you had any thoughts. Or if that brought anything to mind.
What is the French River Greenway in progress?
Yeah, so the French River Greenway, it's a trail that runs along the French River on the Webster side. Um, they have actually done one segment of it, which is a a riverwalk. I don't know if you've seen
In back of the post office, in the parking lot adjacent to the post office.
Okay. So they actually intend for that to go somewhere?
So I mean, they have a trails group that is, you know, so this is, I can, um, I think I have some of the links in the description, but I realized that you guys have the PDF and you don't have the link from the PDF, but I can send you some links about this program, because there's, you know, a broader trails group that's kind of trying to connect these little pieces, and then there's local trails groups in Webster um, and some of these other towns that are trying to build out the individual parts of that. So it's been a slow kind of ongoing pro- progress. It's slow ongoing progress, but it's, you know, kind of big picture, future, thinking about how trails in the region can be connected. So all of these towns, quite a few of these towns that are are here have trails groups that are kind of working on little pieces of this. So Webster did one little piece, and then maybe in the future, there'll be opportunities to do more pieces. And the state is really interested in a regional trails, not quite as interested as Connecticut. Can it, the state of Connecticut has been doing a lot with regional trails, which is how you got some of these sections here. But, you know, there is opportunities for funding for larger sections of trails um through the Mass Trails Program and things like that. So that's just kind of, you know, something to, you know, keep in mind as you think about these, the opportunities here. Um, and then these are just some of the pieces from the um Webster Dudley Corridor Study. Um, talking about the Trails Network, um, and then also, you know, we kind of talked a little bit already about um Stevens Mill. So the last little piece, and I don't know how much time we have, um, but and we could also, we could potentially push this into uh the next time we meet. Um, but Fay, who I, like I said, she was actually out collecting data, um, you know, being out in the field can kind of give you some additional insight about where there's possibilities for things to connect. Um, and we might have talked about a little bit about this, but do, how much time would you say we have? Maybe maybe not Maybe, maybe not that much, should we, uh, close this down, uh, look at the, look at the, uh, notes we've collected? Or do you want to take maybe ten minutes more, um, and Fay can talk about some of her, um, things that she noticed? Or we can save that for next meeting, um, as part of talking about some of the, uh, potential solutions for some of these areas?
No, if, if Fay's been waiting patiently, I would say we got ten more minutes for that, no problem, I mean.
Okay, awesome. I want to make sure I'm respectful of your guys' time because we can definitely push things out if we need to. Okay, but then Fay, I will turn it over to you and I'll click through this slide for you if you want to, just let me know.
Sure, thank you. Um, so I know you guys had talked a lot about, um, connecting the schools together, um, but one of the observations that I made while I was walking, um, was there's this little, um, piece of section, if you can see on where it says Susan Drive, there's a small kind of fragmented area of sidewalk, um. And so some of these highlighted sections are more just suggestions of where I think sidewalks should go. So, um, there's already a little bit along Alton Road, but kind of connecting it up to Jesse Road and then over to Mason Road down would provide access for those community members to the school. Um, there's programs like Safe Roots to School that, um, fund programs like this to allow for students like walking access to schools. Um, so that's another area of funding where you can also get this, but, um, also just promoting that access. Um, also on Susan Drive, there's a little, um, kind of cul-de-sac area where I think there's a high potential to create a back, kind of back behind the school path to the athletic fields, which would provide another egress for students, at least a footpath, um, in between the fields, there's already, um, a paved kind of sidewalk there. So really you would only need a small section through the wooded area between that neighborhood and the back of the school.
There, there's a couple of those trails that are unofficial that the, that kids have been using for years and years to get to school. Problem is a couple of them, they go through private property. And the, 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 the people who own that property, they just basically have let the kids do that for years, so. Um, but as far as like making it an official trail or, you know, some sort of, uh, paved or some, somehow improved, I don't, I don't see how you could do that without getting the property from, from, uh, getting priv- getting a hold of private property, property, which obviously has its own problems.
You could always do like an easement or something like that, maybe where there's an agreement with the private property owner. Um, or just seeing maybe where the parcel technically ends that the school owns. Uh, but that might just be something to explore, just to allow people from, coming from West Main Street or anywhere in this neighborhood region to access the school, um, by walking. But, um, Gemma, if you want to go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, so this one highlights more of that connection you guys are talking about to Nichols College, um, particularly on Airport Road. But also connecting to Tannier Road, which would allow, um, kind of a completed network between Dudley Oxford Road and West Main Street. Um, it would also provide access to those, um, small sidewalk areas that were up farther. Um, I think you guys had talked a little bit about it before too, but that little road segment, um, you guys talking about where the dump is, I think, in like the landfill covering. Um, I think that there is potential access to create a trailhead there, which would grant access for senior communities to be able to get there from the housing.
You're talking Indian Road, I believe is, is.
Yes, it is, Indian Road.
Uh, I, I, just a thought here, Tannier Road, uh, you said you've walked this, you've driven this?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you have. Okay, you probably noticed that Tannier Road is, uh, well, maybe somewhat more challenging in the wintertime than it would be other times of the year.
In what way?
In what way? Well, you're going up a hill or you're coming down a hill. And it's not a straight shot by any means either way.
Well, that's Airport Road going down to the supermarket, Rich. You would say Airport Road.
It's probably at least fifty percent wider than Tannier Road.
It's still a hill.
We'll level the hill, come on, guys. Take care of the box.
Yeah, this is, it's just big picture. Your dreams can come true. That's what this conversation is about.
Dudley Hill Road, Dudley Hill Road takes you down to the same sidewalks on West Main Street we're talking about and you're not dealing with that hill.
That could definitely be an alternative route that you guys decide to take. Um, it has the same access. So that's totally up to you guys. This is your dreams. But, um, if you want to go to the next one, Gemma, there's just one more. So here I noticed there were a lot of, um, fragmented portions of sidewalk to different little neighborhoods. Um, and I mostly just considered connecting them. So Boston Road, I know, is pretty narrow, but it has a huge access to a lot of the trails within you guys' community. Um, I forget what the name of the, the Ardlock Trailhead, um, kind of just leads to nothing. It's just open on the road, there's no parking, no pedestrian access. I walked down that road and it was a little scary, to be honest, but I think that it could really use pedestrian facilities to accommodate that area and make it more, um, frequented by people. I do also want to note that I saw some older couples walking down that road, kind of on people's property. Um, so I think that that has great access for people to actually walk on it. Um, another one is Carpenter Road. There is an area on Carpenter Road, you can see that little red guy, where there's, um, kind of a crossing point for that trail. And again, there's no sidewalks there, so people have to walk in the street in order to get to that area. Um, and it would also connect this kind of Fairview Eagle Drive, I believe, um, community to those as well as connecting the, all those communities to Showfield Ave where there's existing sidewalk. I think that was all I had, to be honest. There was a couple other suggestions that didn't quite make it, um, into the presentation. But, um, for the most part, this is what I had.
Hope you're walking around in the summer and not during the winter months.
We walked around in December, but it had been, um, it hadn't snowed yet, so you were lucky. But in addition, um, I mean, with some of these suggestions, you could also think about, um, at a local level, kind of working with your DPH or whoever pleasure roads to maybe have like a maintenance plan that can help accommodate kind of new sidewalk networks or areas that you guys want people to be able to access. So that could be something that you guys kind of figure out as well.
Okay.
So the last piece of this is, uh, so I was, I wasn't able to put those last couple things you said on the list, but I have them on paper because I had to keep the PowerPoint up. Um, but the last piece is just, I'm gonna pull up the notes we took. You guys can glance at those, make sure there's not any big glaring things that we missed. I hope, so can you see right now Internet Explorer is opening?
No, it's not, Gemma.
All right, let me try something different. Okay, I think I'm gonna have to just change, um, close the screen. And change, one moment. Okay. Okay, can you guys see what's on the, on there now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so actually, Fay, do you mind, since you were taking these notes down, do you mind just quickly kind of mentioning the things that you felt like came up quite a lot? And we'll see if that kind of fits with, um, what the folks in town are thinking of in terms of those kind of bigger areas, places like Mason Road, you know, places like, um, Mill Street that are, you know, kind of top priority to think about solutions for.
Yeah, um, so I kind of just took note of what you guys talked about the most, um, particularly, um, Mason Road and Dudley Hill Road and Dudley Oxford Road on those intersections and who is using them, um, how it's accessed, particularly with the schools. Um, and so just creating a more connected network of sidewalks there, obviously. Um, as well as access to your recreational facilities, so the town beach, um, pathways to trails, um, from like, I think it's the Mason Elementary School you guys are talking about, that goat path access and kind of maybe creating, um, a lit paved path to the beach. Excuse me, um, there were some other areas that you talked about, the Showfield Ave-West Main Street intersection, I believe. And I put there the Mill Street intersection, I think that's kind of where you guys were talking about, um, where the Dip and Donuts is and how it's a relatively unsafe area for crossing at the moment. You have to kind of walk off of the street in order to get to the other side, um. And then just some areas near the senior housing, um, acts, being able to access the trails and connecting them to, you know, the commercial areas along, um, I can't think, Airport Road, where like the market is, um. And that was pretty much what you guys, I thought, talked about the most. There were just some small areas that I noted that you didn't really talk too much about, like the St. Anne's Church on Dudley Hill Road and creating sidewalk. St. Anthony's, okay, thank you.
I, I, if I may, I, I think we did hit upon this, I don't know if they're here. Uh, there were two intersections, as I recall, well, one intersection in particular that came up, and that was the one uh, coming from the cemetery towards Shepherd Hill, if you will, Ramswan Road, Dudley Hill Road. And the way that comes together in terms of those three roads and, uh, the sightlines there, one is, is, is much below the other in terms of ground level. Uh, that, that intersection has some, I think, some problems in terms of safety factor and a lot of high traffic, especially in the morning with the kids. Uh, the other one, and I, I think I let this one get by, was Tannier Road, where it, uh, joins Airport Road. Uh, you've got Dudley Hill Road, you've got, uh, one, two, three, four, you've got basically four roads coming together, but it's not in a traditional sense there. Tannier Road, for example, as you're coming up on the Airport Road is probably, I don't know how many feet below. So you have to get pretty much into the intersection almost to see where the traffic is coming from. It is labeled or identified as a dangerous intersection on Airport Road. But the configuration of the intersection, I think, might be worthy of a second look. Mr. Wachtrobe, you've probably driven that a number of times. I don't know if you had any thoughts on that.
I don't, I can't think of one easy fix for that. I just think that would be.
That's why I think we're asking the experts here in terms of if they've, they've encountered an easy fix somewhere else in the, or something that could be done to that, because that, if that is a high traffic area, I get to that every day. And I'm always wondering, is somebody coming up and coming down, uh, from Tannier Road, coming up on the Airport Road, and I can't see them? And when I do see them, is it too late?
Right, yes. I, I mean, I would have to look at the intersection on, on Google Maps, um, which is why, you know, this is.
I, I, I appreciate your, your technical savvy, but I think driving it gives you another sense of it in terms of, you know, Google Maps being one thing. But being on the road, you know, that's where the rubber meets the road.
I, I totally agree. And I think that's what we're trying to capture now is, you know, that, that, you, you guys live in this space day to day. You really know what those, you know, key locations are. So if I just might, um, just to make sure I understand, it's where Tan, uh, Tannier Road joins Airport Road and what was the third road? Dudley Hill Road. Okay, that, that intersection and then the piece of road, uh, and that corner there along Ran- Rams Hill Road in front of the cemetery, and then you were, you had mentioned a corner there. Uh, it was Rams Hill Road and what was the other road at the corner?
That's Dudley Oxford Road.
Okay, Dudley Oxford.
In the intersection that he just mentioned, there's also, right at that intersection is right where the clubhouse is for the golf course.
Right.
There's a lot of traffic that comes in and out of there during the, uh, the summer and spring.
Awesome. Okay, so do you think that this list kind of captures, at least in a broad sense, sort of all the areas that of concern that you have in the town? Um, and we can kind of work off this to think about, um, you know, what, what kinds of, you know, those building blocks in the Complete Streets Program might, um, you know, be workable in Dudley?
I think one more trail I just thought of was from the Water Department Building is a trail that's used a lot, uh, to get to the beach. It also goes to the beach, um. It's across from Marty's, uh, package store, you, there's like a hill, you go up in the back. And there's a trail the kids use there. I see a lot of people walking there and you follow it. I think it might even connect with the trail that comes from the school that goes to the beach.
Yeah, it does. I've, I've traveled that trail quite a bit. Problem with that trail is it goes through that wooded area that's really hilly. It really goes up and down like a.
It's rough terrain, but it's heavily used also, so.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I'm not sure, okay, perfect, thank you. That was really helpful. So this, just so you guys all know, the link to this, the link to the interactive database where you can look at our, our data that we collected um, and the link to the questions from this presentation, you can find, um, I believe in a previous email and also on the, um, the materials page for the planning board meetings. Um, and then Bill, if you're able to, uh, send out the PowerPoint as well to folks, uh, at the end of this, would that be possible?
Sure, no problem.
Awesome. Okay, thank you so much and I will be at the next meeting with a little bit more stuff for you guys to talk about. Um, and, you know, bring that local knowledge too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time and your hard work. It's appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Gemma.
One more quick question, Gemma. Um, sorry, how, how is the public, um, notified of this? And how, how can they get their input in on this?
Yeah, so well, all of this information, like I said, is posted on the town website, that the three links to these three tools. Um, and then I have my email address at the top of there, so people can send comments. Um, and then I believe this is also an open meeting that people can, um, join in if I'm correct in thinking that.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, the next meeting we'll be talking about project ideas and kind of, you know, what's some of the, the, you know, now that we've kind of got a, a set of locations that you guys are interested in, really this was, in a, in a way, the hard part of kind of narrowing down what you want to look at. The next time we'll be thinking about what are some of those building blocks? How can we, you, you know, use them to address some of these things? And, and, um, then the next one would be, you know, we have a project list pinned down, just presenting that project list and, uh, you know, voting on it or accepting it as a, as a, um, as a planning board. Um, so any of that people can join, um, and they can also send any comments they have about this list or about the data, um, to my email.
Gemma, could you return the host to me now?
Yes. Do I need to just stop sharing or do I need to make you the host?
Go up under participants and, um, you should see a, an ability to transfer it to me.
Multiple participants? Would that work for you?
No, you made Bill LaPage the host.
Oh, thank you.
I'm the, I'm the town of Dudley.
Finally.
All right, guys, meeting's over.
Bill, I think now you have to make.
Okay, thank you, Gemma.
So sorry about that, Bill.
No, Bill, thank you.
So actually, I, I think Bill LaPage, you have to go into your participants and make town of Dudley the host.
Oh, yeah, Bill, you have to make the change.
Yeah, I, I no longer have the option to do.
You'd have to walk me through this.
Uh, click on your, you, um, the bottom of the screen, you should see participants.
Yeah.
If you click on that, you'll see everybody that's in the meeting.
Yeah.
And next to your name is host.
Yeah. Click on you. Click on you.
Gemma, what did you just see when you made that move? Okay, you, you did it, Bill. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, Dan, turn it back to you.
All righty. So Bill, approximately when are we going to be meeting with Gemma and her team again for the next phase?
Uh, probably in a month or so, Gemma. Would you be ready to come back?
Yeah, so I think we're, our, I think we are on the schedule for next, uh, for your next planning board meeting. Is that correct?
That's two weeks from tonight. Would you be ready to have your draft plan prepared?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, maybe it's better to push it out. That way it gives a little bit more time for people to look at some of the materials and things. I'm just thinking, um.
Yeah, I think that four weeks is a big, a good idea, Bill. I think that would give the board a chance to meet in two weeks and kind of discuss this a little bit further amongst ourselves. Just that we think what your priorities might be, for example, or something, and help Gemma just give her a little bit more direction. Um, there's an awful lot to chew and to think about right now, at least for me. I'm hoping the rest of the board feels the same way. So I, I think in four weeks it'd be great if possible.
Okay. So Gemma, that would be the second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday.
Of March.
Awesome. Okay, thank you so much. I think I.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm gonna probably, uh, me and Fay are probably gonna cut out, but again, feel free to email me if you, anything else, uh, comes up or if you have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
All right, so I think the next item is the discussion of the local planning assistance, LPA hours. We've got seventeen hours remaining and possible district local technical assistance projects. What do we have lined up for this one, Bill?
Uh, I guess that's me, Dan. Um, the, uh, just wanted to let you know, and I think most of you are probably aware that, uh, CMR PC provides each community with a minimum of twelve hours of local planning assistance. And, um, this is, uh, something that the town can, it's actually provided to the planning board to use at the board's discretion. And in addition to the minimum of twelve, the town can earn extra hours through attendance at different meetings. And Richard has been very active in attending meetings, so we've actually picked up another five hours. Uh, so for every meeting that somebody attends, pick up another hour of LPA. Uh, so we've got seventeen altogether. So I just wanted to ask whether you, whether the board had any ideas for how we could use those hours. Uh, it begins anew at, uh, the beginning of a fiscal year, so we have until June thirtieth to use the seventeen and then on July one, we would get another, uh, twelve hours.
And what kind of projects could they be helping us on?
Well, here's a list of ideas. Uh, GIS, uh, data analysis, uh, larger planning projects. So if we were doing a study that we were paying for, we could lower that cost by applying the LPA time bylaws, assistance to the town planner. Uh, so there, you know, really, it's, it's a wide range of services that, uh, we can ask for, provided staff actually has that expertise that we're looking for. So we can't use this to hire somebody else outside of CMR PC, but basically anything that they can do, we can ask them to do under this program.
Bill, if we don't use these hours, do we lose them?
Yes, you lose them, uh, at June thirtieth, but you get twelve new hours at the beginning of the next fiscal year.
What about, what would the board feel about, um, I don't even know if we could do this, but what would, what would they feel about maybe asking, uh, Central Mass Regional Planning for some help on the, uh, on the item that came up at the last meeting with the, uh, family that has the farm that's looking, uh, to do some kind of overlay district or something to, um, you know, work, work it out so that the farm, farmland in Dudley could be used for cannabis growing.
Uh, I would have no objection to that. I, just a point of information, I checked with the Cannabis Control Commission. And apparently there is nothing at the state level that gives us any options in terms of controlling the number of growers in town. There are some provisions that apply to retail, but the, the number of growers is apparently open ended. So we could be looking at, uh, a considerable number of people perhaps supplying for that if in fact the, uh, the topography in Dudley lends itself to the cultivation of marijuana. So maybe that is something to consider if it does, it could be a boom industry, so to speak.
Another option that we could talk about later under item seven. Uh, the new housing choice bill has amended the zoning act, and I'll get into those details in a bit, but we could hire, not hire, but we could use CMR PC to, uh, address some of those zoning bylaw amendments they'll have to make as a result of that bill.
If I may, Bill, one thought that comes to mind, and it goes back in some earlier meetings we had with regards to paper streets. Uh, we found out that we apparently have a number of them in Dudley. Uh, the awareness of, of what they are and where they are seems to be somewhat limited. I don't know if that's something that they could dig into and, uh, maybe at, at the very least identify for us so that we know where they were and what might be involved perhaps in future.
That's a good idea, too.
What about the discussion we had about revisiting some of our zoning bylaws? Um, I know I had talked briefly about that, you know, there's some stuff that's come up since I've been a planning board member in my short time and already I'm seeing some, some omissions, some things that probably should be addressed. A couple of examples that come to mind. Uh, it would be nice if we had something in the zoning bylaws, uh, to cover things like parking lots for leased vehicles, because that came up and we had a whole thing, you know, whole go around with that. And it would have been a lot easier if we just, you know, had that as, uh, you know, something that was permitted in that space by s- by special permit. Um, I was also kind of surprised to find that my understanding is that we, we don't have any place in town that allows for self-storage, uh, facilities. That's an awful, you know, that's an awfully lucrative business for some people. I know that the applicant that we had come before the board for the leasing, uh, parking lot that my understanding was that what he actually wanted to do there originally was self-storage units. But that was not a permitted use. There was nothing in our zoning that covered it. I asked about the existing self-storage facility in town and was told that that basically predated anything, so it kind of is a grandfathered-in type thing. But I mean, at some point, somebody might want to do, uh, self-storage facility. And it would be good if our zoning could address that. And then, well, yeah, like Mr. Clark said, cannabis, cannabis, cannabis. We can't, we can't limit certain things, but we can control certain things regarding zoning. So, uh, I guess we should really make sure that all of our, our zoning regarding that is up to snuff. And even something as, well, possibly as small as, uh, cell phone towers. That was kind of an interesting topic that came up when we had the whole thing with the Nichols College up, up on the hill of the church, the congressional church, changing that structure seemed like such a little thing. But one of the things that I learned out of that was that because of the way cellular technology is changing, that the move is going to be towards, uh, moving away towards these very large towers and having these much smaller units, but more of them. So do we need to maybe think about addressing our zoning to take into account that there may be the necessity for some of these, uh, these things to be built in the future if we want to have a, a viable cellular network in town?
Hmm, good idea.
I, I have to say, I think Mr. Wachoby's thought in regard to the self-storage is a good one. If we're anticipating, what, some two hundred new apartments in town? As far as the, uh, the Stevens Mill complex is concerned. Uh, I suspected some of those folks might be looking for some off-site storage, depending on what kind of a living arrangement they might be coming from or perhaps planning for in the future. I don't know what storage would be available for them in that complex, but, uh, the need for more is always there.
Enough ideas there, Bill, or?
Well, I think, you know, why don't I just sort of put together this list?
Yep.
And I'll send it out to you before next meeting and then we can, you know, narrow it down and, and pick one or more as we've all had a chance to think about it. But we've got some good ideas here that, that we can, uh, mull over.
Should we move on to street acceptance procedures?
Sure. And if anybody has any other ideas, you know, let me know and I'll add it to the list. Um, street acceptance procedure. So I had uh, notified you that I'm expecting a couple of, uh, streets to come forward for acceptance at the annual town meeting. That includes, uh, Pierpont Estates, uh, which is almost a mile worth of road, uh, goes, includes Noble Street up to about the, uh, close to, to the, uh, Turner, to the turn at the end of the road. And, um, Tobin Farm, which would, would be all Tobin Farm and perhaps some of, Piazza Road. And so this is just, uh, some information. We don't need to take any action tonight, but just wanted to give you some information as to how, uh, this actually has to work. It's a very strict, uh, procedure which has to be followed. And if any of the steps are messed up, we have to start over again. Uh, a lot of this actually, uh, is in the hands of the board of selection. Uh, so there are essentially three steps. One is the layout where A, the petition is submitted to the board, and I've actually done that for Pierpont and Tobin Farm, so that part is underway. The petition provides a layout plan, uh, so they have done that. Uh, the items in parentheses here are what, uh, town council considers recommendations. Um, so they recommend that the petition provide a title certification. So I think we, we would probably want the board of selectmen to ask the petitioners to provide that. Uh, D, the selectmen then vote to lay out the way, it should be its intention to lay out the way as public and then refer the petition and lay out plan to the planning board. So this is where the board comes in. You have forty, the planning board has forty-five days on the date of referral to make a non-binding report to the selectman. A public hearing is not required by statute. Uh, but so we would, the planning board then would have to have a meeting, public meeting to consider the layout of these ways. And under the subdivision control law, you have a procedure where you, you know, have to approve the, uh, completion of the roadways. I have Graves Engineering, uh, working on Pierpont, doing a completion analysis. Uh, the former highway superintendent had already submitted a report saying that he was satisfied with Tobin Farm. But I know the planning board had, had some additional issues, particularly with, with some of the guardrails. So I think we, we could talk about those and require that work to be completed before you would sign off. And anything else that you notice that you, you are not happy with, uh, that's your opportunity to make sure it gets done before the town accepts it. Um, under E, uh, this is a very detailed procedure for providing notice of the meeting. Um, we don't really need to go into all those details right now, but again, it's very specific and has to be followed. Uh, under F, uh, once the planning board submits the report of forty-five days, have a last uh, and notice has been given to the landowners, the selectman holds a public meeting and votes to approve the layout shown on the plan. A hearing is not required. And then that vote is, is filed with town clerk. Step two is acceptance, which as you probably know, uh, the, it has to go to town meeting and articles submitted on the warrant and the town then votes up or down to accept the streets. Um, and then the third step is acquisition where the town actually completes the process by acquiring the easement or fee in the road and filing it with the registry of deeds. So, um, just by way of information, I think we'll be spending a fair amount of time on this topic in the next couple of meetings. Um, and I just wanted to give you heads up as to how it works so that if you had any questions, uh, based on reading this, you, you could certainly let me know. And if I can't answer, I can ask town council for clarification.
All right, excellent. Any questions, guys?
Bill, um, did I recall this correctly? Is there a rule that says that, uh, these have to be brought to the spring town meeting? They can't be done in the fall?
Correct, yes. Under a town bylaw.
Okay. Oh, oh, it's a town bylaw. That's.
So that trip is up last, uh, year. We were working on Tobin Farm. But we couldn't do it. We weren't ready in the spring and couldn't do it in the fall, so he's kind of back, backing in for the spring.
Does anybody know why that is? What, what the purpose of that is?
No. No, I, I, you know, I don't see why it couldn't be done in the fall, but, uh, I, you know, it's just the way the bylaws are, and I don't know what the reason is.
The bylaw was asked for by, by the previous, uh, highway commissioner.
Oh, they were trying to, uh, control the possible plowing issue or whatever maintenance might be required in the wintertime?
I don't, yeah, I don't think he wanted to, uh, go to November town meeting and get hit with five or six more miles of road.
Okay. That's understandable.
All right, item six, discussion of recommendations pertaining to the planning board in the draft Webster Dudley Corridor Study two thousand twenty.
Again, this is more for information. Um, the economic development committee, um, contracted with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to prepare the Dudley-Webster corridor study. And, uh, they just submitted their draft report. And it's a very thorough analysis of the corridor and, um, what, they had a lot of detailed recommendations based on that work. Uh, it's really, the only reason I'm, I'm sending it to you is because the EDC, while they have, uh, uh, charge of implementing a lot of these recommendations, some of them are obviously not within their, they're barely where, and some of them are actually sort of planning board matters. So these are just, uh, I'll go, I won't go through them in any detail, but you can see there are a number of, uh, connecting West Main Street. And Gemma actually touched upon a lot of those in her presentation. So it's a, it's a way to sort of connect Dudley's West Main Street with Webster's Main Street to try to create more of a, a connected corridor between the two towns. Um, so a number of ways to do that, walkability and trails. She actually had these goals up in her presentation, uh, and we talked about this quite good already. How to, uh, work with the business community, charging the Dudley Chamber, Wes- Webster-Dudley-Axford Chamber and the Webster-Dudley Business Alliance with working with the EDC on ways to promote economic development in town. Uh, institutional collaboration primarily, uh, working with Nichols College. They are a major institution in town, uh, have a lot of spending. Uh, both, uh, purchase of supplies and materials, uh, as well as the student spending. So trying to create close ties with the college and, and try to facilitate ways to harness the, the spending power of the school, uh, to promote local businesses here in town. A number of goals regarding, uh, trying to, um, tap into the town's farms and the, uh, energy that, uh, farmers have to promote their, their, uh, crops. Uh, using, um, you know, things like farmerish markets and agritourism and agri-recreation industries to, to, uh, create some small-scale economic development in town. But these are the, the final ones are the zoning issues that, um, I wanted to bring to the board's attention that were in this plan. And I, I did send you the plan as well, so you can, rather than going through the plan tonight because of time, just want to highlight some of these recommendations. Uh, number one is to amend the base zoning or consider a Main Street overlay district in Dudley to incentivize development types. So the analysis looked at how the Dudley zoning bylaw, uh, regulates of the placement of buildings and the types of. regulates the placement of buildings and the types of businesses that are allowed along the corridor. And it had two, two main recommendations. One is to modify the dimensional requirements to bring buildings closer to the street, allow taller buildings, cut down on the setbacks to create a pattern similar to what Webster has on their Main Street and their downtown with, with buildings very close to the street and the sidewalk, you know, parking in the back, very small distances between buildings. So, so that's one kind of recommendation. And the other is to look at the town's parking requirements and try to revise those. And this has come up in the past. I think that the town's zoning controls on parking are rather weak. So this does make sense for, for the town to look at how to modify its parking section to be more thorough, comprehensive and, but also to minimize the, you know, the visual effect of large parking lots and what that does to stifling walkability between businesses and whatnot. So, so those are the two main zoning recommendations for the board to consider. I think I can certainly go into these in more detail on another meeting. And I encourage you to read the report, particularly the zoning section. So you get a sense of why they were making these recommendations and what their ideas are for solutions. And then obviously we can, you know, flesh those out into actual bylaw amendments over time to try to get at, you know, the, the thought process behind those recommendations.
If I may, Bill, I did read through that and I just, if anyone hasn't read through, I'd ask you to pay special attention if you would. There were a couple of things. One is I came away with the thought that whoever put that together seems to think that West Main Street is as wide as Main Street in Webster, which I think all of us will agree is not the case. Also, I had issue with some of the setback issues and the parking things. I think people live in Dudley because they like Dudley in terms of the character of the town and that they have chosen to live in Dudley and not in Webster. And I, I take issue with some of the recommendations there in terms of changing zoning. And again, I think a major issue, a physical issue that we can't overcome is the dimensions in terms of West Main. And more congestion on that and buildings not set back as they are now or required now and more parking is not going to make the situation any better. And it is not Main Street and Webster. It's not Main Street and Oxford. Somebody may have been confused when they crossed the line, didn't know where they were.
I echo those sentiments. Thank you. Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, Richard said, when I read that, what I got from it was, it sounds like they're trying to get us to change our zoning so that we can make West Main Street and Dudley more like Main Street and Webster. And getting back to my earlier point, I'm not so convinced that Main Street and Webster is exactly the best formula for business in Dudley.
Or even in Webster for that matter.
Another, another idea that they talked about in the report is mixed use concepts, which as you can see in Webster, you do have apartments over, you know, commercial first floor uses. In Webster, we have, you know, in the business district, we do allow residences, we do allow businesses. We don't allow mixed use together. So that's something to also consider to promote greater mixing of land juices in sort of a more of a town center kind of concept.
Yeah, well, we tried to do that in the mill overlay district and the developer came and basically said, look, we don't want to do this. We can't make it economically feasible. So you got that problem.
Again, these are new concepts. I think it's going to take a lot of time to flesh these out, see what makes sense for the town and see whether, you know, they're worth pursuing. And if not, you know, then that's okay too.
That might be worth another. Go on, Bill. Sorry.
Have we asked for any input from the zoning officer? Slash building commissioner?
No, we have not.
I mean, he's the one that battles all these zoning issues and problems on a daily basis. So maybe some input from him on what's reoccurring as problems, you know, with the zoning would be helpful.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Might it be a good idea to include fifteen minutes in our next meeting to kind of discuss this a little bit further? Or are we, do we have ten more time on that?
Up to the board. I'd be happy to do it if the board wants to talk about it further.
I just hate to wait until it comes time for planning board action without us having discussed it or established any kind of just general feeling of what the board would like to do.
Well, they can't make us do anything, right?
No, but I'm saying if they put, if they put something in front of us and if we haven't had a chance to discuss it or even to put any thought into it and we only have so much time to, you know, either do, do this or do that.
Well, there was some good stuff in that study. I will, I will admit, like, one of the things I read was, there was a nice chart and there was a nice table in there that talked about parking space requirements per units and dwellings and things like that. And I was actually kind of surprised to see that, you know, they, they compared Dudley to Webster. And Webster had, you know, pretty reasonable requirements and it seemed like Dudley's were behind the times. So I could definitely see where it would be a good idea to amend our zoning to incorporate things like that.
Well, I took particular issue with the idea of the setbacks. Again, I keep coming back to the fact that West Main Street is not Main Street in Webster. It is much, much narrower. I assure the dimensional differences, but certainly not the same. I mean, just as an example, you've got parking on both sides of Main Street in Webster. You could not do that in Dudley, on West Main unless you shut the road down and you had it one way and traffic only in one direction. And it wouldn't be feasible. And as far as the setbacks are concerned, if you stop bringing buildings closer to that road, which again is narrow, if you will, narrower than that in Webster, I question what that's going to mean in terms of the aesthetics. And again, I think people, so many people may have considered moving to Webster, but chose to live in Dudley. I think they have a thought in terms of what Dudley looks like and what they see it as being going forward or the community that they want to live in. And obviously Mr. Wettrode has spoken to some of the maybe the socioeconomic or other issues that might exist as far as Webster's concerned. I'm not too sure whether we should make things more congested and increase the likelihood of that congestion adding to what already is a confined area at this point.
Oh, Richard, I thought you brought that up. That's what I was going to tell people.
All right. Item seven, discussion of the housing choice bill, recent state legislation, amending chapter forty-eight in the zoning act.
Yes, I sent you this memo and I'll pull it up for you again from town council on this housing choice bill, which was just passed by the legislature. And it has a number of changes to the, to chapter forty-eight, State Zoning Act that I wanted you to be aware of. And I think we will probably need to make some zoning bylaw amendments based on this new bill. And so the highlights in y'all here are things that I added to town council's memo just to zero in on a couple of the things that I thought affected planning board. So under paragraph two, there are really two, two main changes that affect affect Dudley. The first is that when zoning bylaw amendments are brought to town meeting, rather than a two-thirds majority, simple majority would be necessary for specific categories of local zoning primarily pertaining to housing such as multifamily housing or accessory apartments. So those could be proposed and adapted by a majority vote of town meeting rather than a two-thirds vote. And the second major category would be issues regarding special permits for which the planning board is the special permit granting authority, which reduces the quorum, require the quantum of vote from a two-thirds to a simple majority. So we're going through both of those concepts in more detail. So the majority of the town meeting is required to enact these types of zoning amendments of local bylaw for multifamily housing or mixed use developments, accessory dwelling units or open space residential developments. So those zoning amendments then would be adapted by a simple majority vote at town meeting regarding the special permits for which the planning board has jurisdiction on multifamily housing or mixed use development and increase in density of population or intensity for a particular use and proposed development. So that's, I think, where we may need to make some amendments to come in line with this new, with this new law. And what I would want to highlight is that we do have something coming before us for the Stevens Mill, which we, I think we, the planning board will be getting an application, a special permit application within the next couple of weeks for that project. And you're very familiar with what that would amount to. So under this new law, they could be approved as a special permit by a simple majority. They propose that ten percent of the units are affordable. And the planning board has to make a determination that that overlay district is in an area of concentrated commercial development. So just to plant that seed, you need to think about whether that project would fall under the guidelines of this new state act. Now, they have indicated that they might not want to go forward with affordable housing, in which case they would not be eligible for this reduced voting standard. They would then need the two-thirds vote. So it's kind of up in the air at the moment, but it would affect the board in terms of the voting requirement for the special permit, depending on what they come forward with. So, so this is kind of a summary of the state laws. It says mixed use developments in centers of commercial activity, including town and city centers, other commercial districts and rural village districts. So if you think that Stevens Mill is in this center of commercial activity, then they would be eligible for this provision if they provide ten percent of affordable housing. Is that clear? It's a little roundabout, but it's it's intended to, I think the overall intent of this law is to eliminate some of the obstacles for more intensive housing development that a lot of communities have in the zoning bylaws, which can be defeated by, because of the high voting requirement of getting a two-thirds majority. So the thought behind the village is to make it a simple majority so that it would be easier to implement some of these new housing projects that the state feels are necessary.
Bill, this is effective as of what date?
I believe immediately.
Immediately, okay. And anything that was in the process or in the works is subject to this bit of legislation as well?
Yes.
Oh, that's wonderful. All right. Thank you, Massachusetts.
Are you ready to move on to the standard business or?
Yes, there are no other questions on that. We can't?
Bill, I had a quick question on that.
Sure.
Um, there was a, when you were at the beginning of the document, I just tried to open it up my computer and I can't find it now. There was something in there about accessory buildings on the same lot.
Accessory apartments, I believe?
Yeah. I thought that wasn't permissible anywhere in town.
Well, I think we would need to amend the bylaw to be consistent with this act.
Really?
So here it is. See accessory dwelling units in a detached structure on the same lot?
Right, right. So Dan or Guy, you guys, you know, you've been on the board a lot longer than I have. Hasn't it always been the case that that's not been a, been permitted anywhere in the town, as far as I know?
Right.
There are, there are places in town where, where people have gotten, gotten by that by, you know, building a covered walkway across, you know, from a, from a garage with an apartment above it to a house. They just put a covered walkway across or something like that to make it, to make it attached.
So a breezeway, a detached garage that then they put a breezeway in to connect it. But what I'm reading here almost makes it sound like if you've got the acreage, that you could literally build a second house on your property. Is that?
There are, there are limits in the, in the act, Steve, in terms of the size of the accessory structure. I think it's like nine hundred feet or something like that. So it would be intended to be accessory to the main dwelling, not a separate dwelling.
Could you repeat that, Bill? There was some noise on the?
Yeah, it was, it's intended to be an accessory apartment, which is smaller and accessory to the main dwelling, but not a, an equal second home on the property.
So something more like what Guy was just describing, only they wouldn't make you put the breezeway in to, to, to make it one building.
Right, yes.
Okay.
So I'll have
It's going to be a certain size.
I'll get more familiar with the law too as we go forward and and we can talk about that further. And if you want to move on to the annual, we'd have to get busy on it, but I think we could do it if that's your pleasure.
Yeah, sure. I know. My kids are going to wish they had some place to live in a few years. So maybe that'll work out for them.
Everybody will be buying sheds and putting them in their backyard so Nichols College kids can move in for the summer.
Nichols College kids? I'm talking about my own kids.
That's an idea.
All right, standard business, our, our subdivisions, completions, streets?
Sure. The usual report here, Pierpont I mentioned is going forward with acceptance. Jeff Walsh, Jeff Murray and I went out and, and looked at the subdivision a couple of weeks ago. Also, they are both evaluating the condition of the subdivision and putting together a report for the developer of things they want completed before they would support acceptance. Rocky Hill, I don't have anything new there. Piazza Road, I do believe that's coming in for acceptance. Two-thirds of the road, I think, has already been accepted. So just the end of the road down to the cul-de-sac, I think, would be brought forward this year if, if they can pull it together in time. Country View Estates, nothing new there. I hope that the developer would bring that forward, but he hasn't been available. Tobin Farm, again, that's going to come before town meeting. And then Lyons Estates, the work there has, has stopped for the winter as far as I know. And they would be picking that up in the spring. They would want to get that base course down and then come in for lot releases to the planning board so that they could set building homes there. So I think we'll see a fair amount of activity in that subdivision once the weather cooperates. Inspections and actions associated with site plans. I sent you a great report on the, on the test pits for Butler Estates. Just by way of information. And to let you know that, you know, they are working on that. They did have preliminary plan submitted to the board. Also, they appear to be working on the definitive plan. That'll come in at some point. I, I don't have a timeframe on it. But that report was just, you know, what they needed to do to help design their detention base in there. So that's nothing for the board to act on. The update on the West Dudley Solar Project, you may recall that that AMP solar development was causing some, some significant stormwater problems for one of the neighbors. And I finally received a detailed remediation plan, which involves a perimeter drain or some kind of a trench drain on that homeowner's land. I sent it to Jeff Walsh. He approved that, that plan. So it's up to the landowner and the solar developer to implement that, that plan on that homeowner's property. I believe the homeowner is cooperating because of the problem they've had in the past. So I'm hoping that that, that issue will be resolved shortly and that project can then be So I'm hoping that that, that issue will be resolved uh shortly and that project can then be. Um, signed off on and closed out uh by the planning board.
All right, moving on to planner's plate.
Um, a couple of things, uh. The, there's some zoning amendments you already know about that already found up on Corbin Road. Uh, and you were aware of last year that the uh rezoning of one fifteen Schofield Avenue. To industrial one thirty was uh um postponed or um. Told off the table and they want to come back again for this annual. Uh, so I think that that would be, we'd have to start that process over again, hold a public hearing. And uh that would go to town meeting again and, you know, see what the result would be this time. Um. We had two other uh planning studies that are, that are moving along. You already know about the economic development plan. Uh, the ADA plan, the disability plan was uh presented to the board of selectmen on uh January twenty fifth. Very detailed analysis of town buildings, parks, um, and other facilities uh in regards to compliance with the ADA. Uh, their uh site by site recommendations with cost estimates in that plan. Uh, the number of policy changes the town must make as well in order to come into compliance. Uh, so that will be a very good tool moving forward uh for the town to start working on those. Items identified in the report, which are many, it'll take a while. But uh it's a very good start, I think, um, and gives the town a, a real good blueprint to uh move forward on. Uh, making the town uh comply with ADA. And the other study was the Jericho Brandon Infrastructure Plan, uh, which was presented to the board of selectmen. Uh, last Monday, uh, we had a very good discussion on the infrastructure issues. In uh these two uh neighborhoods in town. Um, board was very pleased with, with the report. Again, there's a, a lot of work that needs to be done on the water, sewer, drainage, street sidewalks, et cetera. In those neighborhoods, uh, but it provides a, a very nice way to. Uh, justify grant applications for a lot of that work. And I think over the next. Five years, there's, there's certainly enough there to keep the town busy in terms of trying to overcome some of those deficiencies. So those are some of the, the planning, recent planning activities that have been going on in town.
All right, any comments from the planning board?
If you may, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, Bill mentioned the ADA compliance issue. I was very surprised if I got the press report correctly, that there were some issues with the fire station. Which was just completed last year, wasn't it? Nine, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty? I think it was in the order of several thousand dollars. I, I would have thought that that building was compliant as of the day opening, uh, day it opened and. Unless something has changed in terms of requirements, uh, again, I was very shocked and surprised to see that listed. And that there was a considerable, and I forget the exact amount, but there was a fairly sizable sum associated with that uh project. Uh, I, I, on the other hand, I, as Bill mentioned, there are a number of things active in town right now, a number of plans. Number of things going forward, hopefully going forward. And I think there's an opportunity here to uh really improve both the infrastructure and the livability of the town of Dudley. Uh, coming up uh very soon.
Dan, I had a quick comment, uh, more of a question for the town planner. Just curious, have you heard anything about uh? What might be going on regarding that? Uh, we talked about down there on Chase Ave. That, that extra lot. That possibly getting that for the town and do something recreationally. Have you heard anything else from anybody in the town regarding that?
No, I, you know, my, my hope is that um. The developer of that marijuana facility would consider that um concept. Um, I think it's a very good one. I don't think they can do much with that property because it's all floodplain. So I think it makes a lot of sense to try to uh work with them on implementing that French River Greenway plan. Perhaps a canoe kayak launch, um, connected to the, to the bike trails, whatever. Makes sense, I think, would, would really be a nice uh amenity for the town. But I ha, I don't have any, any new information on that.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Nope.
All right, we've got some other business to deal with, right? Next meeting, two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Did we take care of the vouchers already? Is that what we talked about?
I just wanted, you know, when I, so we, we canceled the last meeting when. Uh, these uh bills were, were going to be brought before the board for approval. And rather than, than wait, I asked Dan whether it'd be okay if, if he could approve those invoices. Uh, and, and get those uh vouchers prepared so we could start paying these bills. So I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that uh we had, that uh Dan and I worked together on this.
Shocked.
Uh, the three items were the T and G for the legal ad, hundred ninety six dollars. Of the Graves invoice for some work on the marijuana facility, fifteen hundred twelve dollars and sixty cents. And another invoice on the Lions Estates from Graves for hundred sixty four dollars and fifty cents. So just, you know, for your information, we did, we did do that without your approval, but I thought it expedient to get those bills in motion.
Any other town notices that we need to know about?
Um, no, Michelle, do you have anything that you want to bring up that the board should know about?
No, if they want me to send the infrastructure um plan to anyone, I'd be happy to send it out to them. The Jericho Brandon infrastructure study.
Please, if you would. Thank you.
Over here too, please. That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, Michelle, is that just a PDF you can email us or?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, I'll take a copy of that.
No problem.
Good night, everybody.
Does anybody want the ADA plan? It's, it's about two hundred pages. Richard, you might be interested. I, I'll send it to you because you mentioned the fire station thing.
I, I think it was fifty eight hundred dollars if I recall the amount that was reported in the Webster Times.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll send it. I'll look and send it to you so you can see it.
I'd like to see that, Joe. I'd like to see that also.
Good, I'll send it to everybody then. And again, it's a draft, so uh both of these are drafts, so if you have any. Feedback, please, don't wait because the, you know, the consultants want to wrap them up and get paid.
Any other correspondence?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if it's in order, make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, um. Before I, before I ask for a second on that one, I just wanted to say this was, it was a long but informative meeting tonight. I appreciate everybody uh. With their focus and, and staying tuned in here. It wasn't easy for me, but uh you guys all led by example. I was trying to follow that example, so thanks for that. Um, I do have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Before we go, is everybody getting their town email account working properly?
No.
No.
No? Who, who isn't? Everybody.
I'm not either. Who, who is? It'd be a better thing.
I, I think it's working, although the last set of emails you sent out, I didn't need it.
Well, I've been sending them to, to both the new and your old, just to make sure you got them.
I've been getting the old ones, so.
Okay.
That's how I get the Zoom meeting invite and all that stuff.
Then I'll follow up with the IT consultant to uh be in touch with you.
I'll send it to both, yeah.
Excuse me?
I'll send it to both of them as well.
Okay. Good. Okay, that was all that.
All right, so I still have a me, uh, a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, I guess we have to go through roll call, right? Steve?
Hi.
Richard?
Hi.
Bill?
I guess so.
I guess so, Guy. And an eye over here. All right, once again, guys, thanks much, okay?
Thank you all.
I hope you're feeling better. Uh, we see you more healthier for the next meeting.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.